Are you ready? Let's do it. No, no, you're good, you're good. Well, good evening, everybody. I want to... Oh, Susan, I didn't mean to interrupt you back there. No, okay, sounds good. Do you want to just do a little crescendo before we start? Okay, sounds good. Welcome to the Temecula City Council meeting. Today's June 25th, live from downtown Temecula. Let me see here. All right, Susan, as always, thank you for the prelude music. I guess it's summertime and where are all the kids? They kind of out on their vacations? Yeah, that's what I figured. All right. We always like to start out our meetings with invocations. And I'm going to call Chaplain Insalaco from the Sheriff's Department up to give our invocation. And then we're going to have a flag salute. Councilmember Ron, would you take care of that? So remain standing after the invocation. Please stand. Chaplain.
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for substance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for those assembled in this council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and filling, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, peaceful, personal peace in their lives and in their task. I pray for the agenda and before them today, please give them assurance of what they would... of what we would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in the city of Temecula. I ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Please join me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. God bless you. You can be seated. Madam City Clerk, I have some distinguished gentlemen up here on the dais with me. Can you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edwards is absent. Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Nager.
And the mayor is here. This is a time in our meeting for presentations and proclamations. And I'd like to start off talking about the VFW. Is Commander Amy Alvarez here? Amy, come on up. Let me just say a few words. You're the new commander.
I am, yes.
Well, first of all, welcome. And is her microphone on? Is it? Say something, Amy, just say hi.
Hello?
Okay, you're on. You know, I remember back, this may be before your time, but if you went over to Pool Hole Street, there used to be the old VFW building. How many people remember that? And it eventually was torn down, I believe, for creek improvements, but for many a year, almost 25 years, that's where the VFW met. And now you folks are over off of Diaz, right?
Yes.
And it was so important that the work of the VFW continued. And it's a pleasure to welcome you as the new commander. Talk to us.
Thank you. So my name's Amy Alvarez. I've had the pleasure of meeting some of you already at various events, and I know many of you have already been over to where we are now over at Diaz. So our House Committee Chairman Phil coined the term "the smallest post that does the most." So by square footage, we are the smallest post in California, but we have over 600 members at our VFW. Not all of them are active, but we do have all of those members. And my goal for this year is to continue to grow our posts as we have a huge population of active-duty and veterans in Temecula and Marietta. So I joined the post about two years ago, noticed that my predecessor, John, had a need for help, and stepped in. I guess kind of my nature is to keep myself busy all the time. So last year, I served the post as a senior vice commander, and John decided he was tired and wanted to step down and do something a little different. Now he's working up at district. And I was voted in as the commander for this year. So I served in the Marine Corps for 16 years. I was retired after a head injury. I went to school to become a psychotherapist, which is what I do now during most of my days, and then felt the need that I have something I could give back to the community. So that's kind of how I came involved with the VFW. My vision for this year is community. I was talking a little bit earlier. I know that we're a busy post, and we've done a lot in Temecula, and the city of Temecula has done a lot for us, but I feel like as opposed to we could be more involved with our community in general, not just our veterans, but everybody, the kids that are in the community, and it's going to be our next generation of veterans. So I will be hopefully being able to reach out to some of you that are sitting here and just getting ourselves out there more involved with whatever the city needs from us.
Well, thank you. The post is very important, not only to us as council members, but also to the city of Temecula. We appreciate you being here tonight and welcome.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your new post.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So I get the honor of introducing a bunch of ladies who you don't want to mess with because when they put their mind to something, they do it. Could all of you young ladies come on up and from the Temecula Valley Women's Club, come on up? All of you, come on up. Mayor Pro Tem Stewart's going to read a proclamation.
All right. "The city of Temecula is proud to recognize the Temecula Valley Women's Club for their outstanding achievements at the State of California Women's Club Convention. The Temecula Valley Women's Club won first place for the conversation..."
Conservation.
"...conservation, domestic violence..." Well, you guys talk a lot too, I imagine, right? Okay, "domestic violence awareness, education, fundraising, and development, international outreach, and leadership categories." That's a lot.
Yes, it is.
Is that all of them?
No, well, that's all but two.
Oh, my gosh. "The Temecula Valley Women's Club is a valued partner. The club has dedicated over $3 million in numerous volunteer hours to the Temecula Valley to provide funding for public high school scholarships, the library, the museum, and many other local organizations. We congratulate the Temecula Valley's Women's Club..." I can't say "Women's Club" for some reason. "...Women's Club for receiving these distinguished awards, and we thank them for their dedication, service, and commitment to our community." Thank you very much.
Ladies, come forward, come forward. Would one of you like to speak?
We would, if that's all right.
No, it is totally okay, but everybody come on forward. We want to see you.
Okay, everybody surround me.
And then, and guess what? Then we're going to take your picture.
And I guess Joanne isn't here yet. Oh, thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem, why don't you stay there and take a picture? Stu? Yeah, why don't you stay down there and take a picture after...
With us.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And I want to thank Mayor Nager and the council members and yourself for this wonderful acknowledgement and your recognition and being recognized at the California State Federation of Women's Clubs with over 241 clubs and 11,000 members is a satisfying result of our hard work. However, even more satisfying is the impact that Temecula Valley Women's Club has had on our community over our 38 years in this community. Founded as Rancho Temecula Area Women's Club in 1980, we are dedicated to the improvement of the educational, ethical, and cultural life of our community. Over the years, we have contributed over $3 million in community projects and scholarships and over 1.5 million volunteer hours. Proceeds from our holiday home tours and galas have funded stadium seats at Temecula Valley High School, the museum building fund, Chapel of Memories at Sam Hicks Park, the Temecula Town Association Community Center Building Fund, and the Temecula Community Recreation Center, CRC, Building Fund. We purchased a 12-passenger handicapped accommodating van for the Mary Phillips Senior Center and automatic entry doors for their facility. In 2003, we donated $15,000 to both the City of Temecula and the City of Marietta Libraries' Building Funds, for which we were nominated for Nonprofit Charitable Organization of the Year. Isn't it about time we won? Most recently, we contributed to Safe Alternatives for Everyone, Women Against Child Trafficking, Animal Friends of the Valleys Building Fund, Wheels for Warriors, Santa Rosa Plateau Nature Education Foundation, Sail Ranch Animal Sanctuary, Operation Smile, and we partnered with the City of Temecula to become a Tree City USA. And folks, this is a short list. This does not include all of our volunteer hours as well. We also annually award three scholarships each to all six of the area public high school graduating seniors, making us the largest local scholarship contributor behind Pachanga. Our first holiday home tour was in 1985, and I'd like to honor two of our members who started it and have worked tirelessly with us and guided us ever since, Joyce Sullivan and Marcy Hodges. Our third, Joanne Lamb, could not be here to this evening. These ladies started our most successful fundraising program that has supported charities and city projects for 35 years and made TVWC a cornerstone of our Temecula Valley. So congratulations, Temecula, on your 30th birthday. We like to think that you couldn't have done it without us.
I would agree.
We would like it if you would please support our efforts in our city by coming to our gala, which is September 7th, and our home tour, which is November 16th and 17th this year. Our third VP, Barb Purdy, has saved the date cards. You can also go to our website, tvwc.com, and we hope to see you at our events. And thank you again so much for the recognition. We appreciate you.
It's our pleasure, and it's well deserved, and for our keepsake and for yours as well. Why don't everybody just turn around? We're going to take a photo.
With our...
And Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, get right in there. Stu, get in the middle there and...
Stand behind.
There you go.
This young lady here.
Joanne.
There you go. Awesome. That's a good picture. Ladies, thank you, and thanks for all you did. All right, this is the public comment portion of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, I understand we have some public comments. Do we have a video? All right, roll the video.
Hey, hello. My name is Yan Chenmen, owner of IC Rainbow Ice Cream Shop. A total of 30 minutes provided for member of the public to address the city council on items that appear with consent calendars or matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker choose to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filled with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendars. Once a speaker is called to speak, please come forward for all public hearing or council business items on the agenda. A request to speak form may be filled with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Thank you very much. Call the first speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Miriam Walheim, to be followed by Dichi Manley.
Hello, Ms. Walheim.
Hello to the city council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Miriam Walheim. I am president of PFLAG Temecula, a local LGBTQ organization dedicated to supporting parents, families, friends, and allies of the LGBT community. We offer support groups, outreach, and education. We're here tonight. I'm also here with two other local Temecula 501(c)(3) nonprofits that are sitting behind me, Temecula Valley Pride and the LGBTQ Center of Riverside County. And we're here tonight to request of the city of Temecula to light up City Hall with rainbow colors one night for Pride Month this year. So to provide some background for the city council, in the year 2000, June was officially recognized as Pride Month in the United States and since then also around the world. And this was to commemorate the Stonewall Riots in 1969 that marked the beginning of the LGBTQ movement for equality and acceptance, and to also highlight the achievements of prominent LGBTQ individuals throughout history. Although much progress has been made around the world and in the U.S. since the '60s toward advancing human rights for everyone, many members of the LGBTQ community, as well as their families and friends and allies, still continue to face some stigmatization, prejudice, and discrimination by citizens, businesses, local, state, and national governments. However, I'm happy to say that other government agencies all over the country have been showing their support for the LGBTQ community in the United States by flying rainbow flags and lighting up buildings, bridges, and monuments in rainbow colors during Pride Month at a growing rate every year. Some notable examples include the White House, the Empire State Building, the Sacramento State Capitol, which was announced about a week ago, and many other government buildings all across the U.S. and Texas, Ohio, Missouri, Minnesota, and many others. Time and again, the response from local communities, the media, and the general public has been overwhelmingly positive support. A little about our organization. PFLAG Temecula was founded in 1994. We've been around for more than 20 years. With a small group of people when the LGBTQ community in Temecula was far less visible and maybe a little less welcome at times, we are proud to say that more than 20 years later, we now have over 500 members in the Temecula Valley in our organization alone. We have youth members from all major TVUSD high schools, and we've hosted many educational workshops over the years with local law enforcement, schools, healthcare, and foster agencies, to name a few. In addition, I'm personally honored to thank the city of Temecula and proud to say that in 2019, PFLAG Temecula is now hosting our once-a-month support group meetings for adults and youth here at the City of Temecula Civic Center.
And I'm going to cut you off right there because your time is up. I'm going to recommend you make your inquiry of the city manager's office. If you need that phone number, our city clerk will give it to you, or you can email me. I'd be happy to forward it. And you can do that by just clicking my face on the city's webpage, or any one of the council members, actually. We'll get it over to the city manager, and you can talk with him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is... The next speaker is Dichi Manley, to be followed by Kelly Ortiz.
Hello, Ms. Manley.
Hello. My name is Dichi Manley, and I am the president of the LGBTQ Center of Riverside County. Our vision is to unite our communities to create safe spaces where everyone belongs. A lot of us here, this crowd, are trying to make a difference for a fight that has been going on for so long, a fight that not only affects the LGBTQ community, but also families, institutions, allies, and our children. We can lead together in creating peace and inclusion. We can make a difference because everyone is capable of this choice. And it begins with a single step. Lighting the City Hall with pride colors could be that single step. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kelly Ortiz, to be followed by Bob Cowell.
Ms. Ortiz, good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Kelly Ortiz, and I am an ally and advocate in the LGBTQ plus community. I'm also a special needs educator right here in TVUSD, and I'm the community outreach director for Temecula Valley Pride. I'm joined by my fellow board members, who are longtime residents here in Temecula. Jamie Flores and Morgan Billings created Temecula Valley Pride with a vision to build a strong LGBTQ plus community through socialization and bonding. The mission of Temecula Valley Pride is to bring LGBTQ plus people in the greater Temecula Valley area and surrounding communities together in solidarity and support, and to educate and enrich those around us regarding the LGBTQ community and its history, varied challenges, and contributions. I would like to share with you my passion for working so hard to educate in the community. When my daughter came out to me at the age of 15, she was afraid to come out due to her perceptions, because of how the world around her sent her messages that LGBTQ plus individuals are less than or not equal. Although I was extremely supportive of her, we quickly came to realize there are many youth that do not have that support because of the community's views. As a community, we can change the narrative that our youth experience and how we behave, what we say, and the hearts we show. Think back to a time when you were shown kindness by a stranger holding the door open for you, the person behind you buying your coffee or meal, or even just a quick smile as you passed by. How did that shift your mood for the time being? Imagine extending that kindness citywide. Imagine a community who looks beyond the label and sees the heart of an individual. Imagine a community who understands that the different paths we take while living together help to build a stronger community as we play to our strengths. Imagine a community of love. In my experience of educating in the community for the last five years, people want to learn about our loving community of LGBTQ plus folks. By lighting the city up rainbow, you will be showing the great taxpaying LGBTQ plus adults and our precious up-and-coming youth, that we are valued members of our community in a multitude of colors. The way we recognize our veterans, individuals with autism and Down Syndrome, and those with cancer. Lighting up the city recognizes those special classifications of people. We would like you to recognize this wonderful community the same way, and it would be greatly appreciative for the city of Temecula to stand tall with all communities represented here, including ours.
And with that, thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Almost made it. Just a couple of seconds.
I had one more sentence.
No, I'm sorry. But thank you for speaking tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by our final speaker, Ira Robinson.
Mr. Cowell, good evening to you, sir.
Sure. Recently, you brought up the case of socialism versus the Constitution. I'm going to be pounding on that continuously until the election time because I think it's going to be a driving force in the election. The election of 2020 is coming up, and socialism hasn't worked around the world. They will show places like Norway, Sweden, et cetera, except they're going away from socialism and embracing more capitalist systems as their population diminishes. And anyhow, saying that, I was... I looked at the statistics for Venezuela, which was the third richest country in the Western Hemisphere in 1992. In 97, they were the second-largest purchaser in the world of Ford F-150s. In 2001, Venezuela voted for a socialist president, Chavez, to address income inequality. 2004, private healthcare is completely socialized. In 2007, all higher education becomes free. In 2009, socialist ban private ownership of guns. In 2012, what candidate... One candidate for president said, as Bernie Sanders said, "Venezuelans are living the American dream better than Americans." That was 2012. 2014, opposition leaders are in prison. 2016, food shortages become widespread. In 2017, the constitutional elections are suspended. And in 2019, we have what we have now is chaos with... Actually, you still have two billionaires in Venezuela along with who knows how much money Maduro and family and military has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell. Next speaker, please.
Our final speaker is Ira Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, good evening as usual.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I won't take very much of your time. I suppose the only thing that I really want to say is thank God I don't live in Venezuela. We live in the United States of America. It's a nation that is governed by laws. It's governed by elected representatives. It makes those decisions based on the determinations of the majority, giving some room for the God-given rights that are granted and protected under the Constitution. That's not going to change. This will not be Venezuela. I could spend more time talking about the differences between capitalism and socialism, but you've heard those arguments. Let's just give up on Venezuela. But every time somebody talks about it, I'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more speakers? All right, that means we're going to move on to city council reports. Mr. Stewart?
Well, I... About two months ago, a group of mothers had come and wanted us to address gun control... not gun control, gun safety. And so that kind of stirred up something in me as a gun owner, and so I kind of directed city staff to start looking into what could we do for our citizens that have concerns with guns in their home or kids who go to homes with guns. And so we're going to do a gun safety program September 26th, and it's going to be a gun safety and active shooter... I don't even know how to describe it. But it's basically they're going to... You're going to be able to go and work with law enforcement officers and teach your kids how to properly not touch a gun, or if you have access to a gun, what are you supposed to do? Active shooter situations, you know? Everybody says it can't happen here. It can't happen here. It's happened at places just like here. So we need to prepare our kids, if they see something, to be able to tell somebody and to be proactive instead of reactive. So... And if they have to be reactive, be reactive correctly. And so also, September 28th, the city does a health and wellness fair right out in front of City Hall. And so we'll have another booth that's also going to be doing pretty much the exact same thing. So anybody who can't get to the one Thursday night activity, they'll be able to get to that same activity on Saturday, the 28th. So that's something I've kind of... Those group of mothers really kind of spurned on me that we really need to have something for people who are really concerned about that, this. And there are a lot of people who are really concerned about this. So, good thing. Thank you.
So go over those dates and places again?
September 26th, it'll be at the Mary Phillips Senior Center. And then September 28th, it'll be right in front of City Hall, and we'll have a booth. So anybody with kids, you know, who parents are concerned about this, because it's not just guns in your home, it would be guns in somebody else's homes. What is a kid supposed to do about that, you know? Not touch it, basically. But we'll have our law enforcement officers there to basically inform them on the correct procedural things to do.
Is your second date, I think it's during the health fair?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, so there'll be a lot of activity going on.
Yes.
You'll report out on this in the coming meetings?
Absolutely.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Schwank, anything tonight?
No, nothing tonight.
Thank you. How about Mr. Ron? Nothing tonight. And I was going to play a video, but in the interest of time, we won't play that tonight. We'll probably play that at the next meeting, okay? So let's go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion on these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive the reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of June 11, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands, that's the city's checkbook. Four, adopt ordinance 19-09, public safety alarm systems, that's our second reading of this new law. Five, approve the city treasures report as of April 30, 2019. Six, approve financial statements for the third quarter ended March 31, 2019. Seven, approve the cumulative purchase of miscellaneous materials, services, and supplies anticipated to exceed $60,000 per vendor for fiscal year 18 and 19. Eight, approve an agreement with David Church and Associates for federal legislative consultant services and authorize the reissuance of a request for proposals for state legislative consultant services. This is at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Pro Tem Stewart and Councilmember Ron. This is at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Protem Stewart and Councilmember Ron. Nine, approve the sponsorship agreement with Motor Maids, Inc. for the 2019 Motor Maids Motorcycle Parade. This is at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Protem Stewart and Councilmember Edwards. Ten, approve an agreement with Environmental Science Associates, ESA, for the preparation of a supplemental environmental impact report for the Harvest in General Plan and Specific Plan Amendment. Eleven, approve an agreement for consultant services with De novo Planning Group for the preparation of the 2021-2029 Housing Element Update. Twelve, award a construction contract to Greer's Contracting and Concrete, Inc. for the sidewalks, Old Town Boardwalk Enhancement Public Works 17-16. Thirteen, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for sidewalks, Sixth Street Improvements Public Works 17-05. And that's it. Do we have a motion?
Second.
That was Mayor Protem Stewart, seconded by Councilmember Swank. Everybody, please cast your vote. And that passes 4-0 with Councilmember Edwards absent. The city wears several hats. One of the hats we wear is the Community Services District. At this point, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting and turn the gavel over to President Stewart at the Community Services District meeting.
Okay, let's call to order the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam Clerk, please note that four of the five of us are here. Are there any public comments? Okay. So all we have is the consent calendar, which is item number 14, approve the action minutes of June 11, 2019. Number 15, approve the financial statements for the third quarter ending March 31, 2019.
Move those items.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by the mayor and Mr. Ron. Please vote. All right, that passes 4-0. Directors' Report.
Mr. President, next week, join us for an old-fashioned Star Spangled Fourth of July Parade here in Old Town. There it is. The parade starts at 10:00 a.m. and includes marchers, equestrians, floats, and more, all traveling north on Old Town Front Street. And after the parade, head on over to Ronald Reagan Sports Park for an afternoon of live music, food vendors, and a fun zone for the kids. The evening concludes with a spectacular fireworks show at 9:00 p.m. sharp. Please visit our website for parking information at temeculacca.gov/4thofjuly. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. General Managers' Report.
Nothing tonight, sir.
All right. Any Board of Directors' Reports?
Move it, German.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we adjourn.
Thank you. Another hat we wear is called the successor agency to Temecula Redevelopment Agency. I'm going to call that meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, all of us are here with the exception of Councilmember Edwards. Do we have any public comments? Very good. So we'll move to that consent calendar. Item 16, approve the action minutes of June 11, 2019. And 17, approve financial statements for the third quarter ended March 31, 2019. I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
That was Stewart and Swank. All in favor, or actually, put your, press your buttons. There we go. And that passes 4-0 with Ms. Edwards absent. Do we have a Directors' Report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any Board of Directors? Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sarda is adjourned. Let's see here, we're going to go to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Since we do have a public hearing today, item 18, I'm going to read the rules. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any one of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item 18, approve an amendment to Chapter 5.22 of the Temecula Municipal Code, massage and massage establishments at the request of subcommittee members Edwards and Ron. Do we have a staff report? Good evening, Dale.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members.
So this is a proposed amendment to the existing massage ordinance with the City of Temecula Municipal Code. Chapter 5.22 is the current massage ordinance. It requires that massage therapists obtain a massage technician permit from the city. It also requires that massage establishments obtain a massage establishment permit from the city, and it establishes requirements for the operation of establishments, the approval, denial, revocation, and duration of permits, transfer of ownership exemptions, application fees, violations, et cetera. In 2008, the legislature approved the Massage Therapy Act, which created the Massage Therapy Council. It's a nonprofit organization that has the authorization and responsibility for issuing massage therapist certification and license. They also have the responsibility to discipline certificate holders for acts of, unprofessional That act also restricted local governments' ability to regulate massage therapists. They took that away from local governments, and then they also restricted the local government's ability to regulate massage establishments. In 2015, AB 1148 significantly amended the Massage Therapy Act. They retained the ability to regulate massage therapists, but they imposed greater statewide regulations on them. They expanded the CAMTC board membership by adding law enforcement to address the issue of human trafficking, which includes both labor trafficking and sex trafficking. They restored the local government's authority to regulate massage establishments, including the ability to establish a cap or the maximum number of establishments within a local jurisdiction. So we're here because the current ordinance needs to be updated to be consistent with state law. We want to facilitate the ethical practice of massage therapy at legitimate massage establishments. We want to prevent and discourage the misuse of massage establishments and therapy as an opportunity for active prostitution and other illicit and unlawful activity. And we want to provide law enforcement additional tools that they need to more effectively regulate establishments with significant and/or repeat violations. There's also been a proliferation of massage establishments within the city. In comparison of neighboring cities around us, we have three times as many. We have about 68 in the City of Temecula right now. Of those 68 massage establishment, 45 of those are what we consider massage-only, in that they only provide massage services. The remainder of those are businesses that include massage services in addition to other services they provide, such as a salon or day spa. The massage-only establishments are primarily the ones that have multiple and repeat code violations. And working with PD and code enforcement, they estimate that the number of massage-only establishments that are compliant with the Temecula Municipal Code are approximately 10 to 15. So the summary of our proposed ordinance tonight, the ordinance would differentiate between massage, or the two types of massage establishments. One is the massage-only, as I mentioned, and the other are the businesses where massage is ancillary to other services, such as day spas. The ordinance would limit the number of massage-only establishments and create a cap. Based on one per 10,000 persons with the current population of over 113,000, the maximum number of massage establishments would be set at 11. I'm sorry, that's the maximum number of massage-only establishments would be set at 11. The cap does not include businesses where massage is ancillary to other services. And by ancillary, we mean where massage uses less than 50% of that floor area of the business. The ordinance would allow legally operating massage establishments to continue to operate even if that number exceeds the cap. There would be no new applications that would be approved if the existing number of massage-only establishments equals or exceeds that cap. And then in terms of enforcement for permit revocation, denials, and fines, permits may be revoked based on the type of violation. We have basically a tier one and a tier two system setup, where we have tier one are serious violations and tier two are non-serious violations, yet violations of the code. So for tier one violations, any massage establishment is subject to immediate revocation of their permit with due process for any of the following types of violations. If the chief of police determines that there is an immediate threat to public health and safety, employing a massage technician that does not have a state-certified, the CAMTC certification, or for any of the following violations made by an owner, operator, or massage technician: conviction of a crime involving sexual offense, conviction of an offense involving controlled substance, conviction of theft, dishonesty, fraud, deceit, or violence that's related to the operation of a massage establishment, living on site, having alcohol, recreation, or recreational illicit drugs on site, massaging prohibited areas of the body, and wearing inappropriate clothing as defined by the CAMTC. For tier two violations, any massage establishment may have their permit revoked if any three violations of the ordinance occur within a 12-month period. Those include such things as improper sterilization of equipment, incomplete records of patrons, inaccurate roster of employees, operating outside the designated hours of operation, and inappropriate advertisement, and also having non-employees or non-patrons on site. An applicant for a new massage establishment permit may be denied if the number of massage-only establishments is equal to or exceeds the cap, the applicant has made false, misleading, or fraudulent statements on their application, or within a 12-month period, the site of a massage establishment has been closed due to criminal activity, been closed due to a permit being revoked or received notice of revocation, has outstanding fines, or has violations that have not yet been addressed. If a permit is denied for failure to comply with the ordinance, the applicant, owner, and/or operator may not reapply for a permit for a 12-month period. Also want to increase the administrative citations for violations of the massage ordinance to, up to $1,000 per violation. At this time, I'm going to ask one of our police department representatives to come up and speak about some of the compliance inspections and what they address.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. As members of law enforcement, we do periodic checks and inspections of the massage businesses here in the city. And through our efforts, we have noted that there are a number that are engaged in illicit activities. In fact, much of what gentlemen just spoke about are the same violations that we periodically see. And that is our efforts to make a distinction between what, those that are engaged in illicit activities and those that are legitimate businesses. Right here, we see a number, these aren't, it's not a comprehensive list, but this is some of the violations we often see. Unlicensed therapists, no ID cards, inappropriate clothing is a, is a big one. Those members that are engaged in therapy, living on the premises, we often see those throughout the city when we're doing our inspections. And this gives you a pretty good idea of making a distinction of those that are engaged in illicit activities. Unfortunately, we know through experience that many of these are engaged in human trafficking activities. However, due to some of the hurdles that we run into, the frequent moving of the therapist, fear of law enforcement, cultural language barriers, it is often very difficult to make a determination and do a thorough and complete investigation, leading to human trafficking charges. However, with the new ordinance, we feel we can make a huge impact on permanently closing down some of these establishments and having a major impact on, on this type of activity in the city.
Before you go, can I ask one question?
Yeah, just one second. Officer, would you state your name for the record?
Mike Hatfield. I'm a lieutenant with the department.
And your name is?
Mike. Michael Hatfield.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay. And this is Orlando Vigil.
I'm assigned to the Temecula Pop Team.
Thank you very much.
He is actually responsible for our enforcement efforts.
Thank you very much, and thanks for your work. Go ahead, Mr. Stewart.
Before you go, so you mentioned living on premises. Could you, could you kind of define that for me? What, what do you mean by they're living on premise?
Sir, a lot of things we see is numerous suitcases, bedding.
If you can speak in the.
A lot of things we come across are numerous suitcases, bedding, toiletries, things that you wouldn't see in a other massage parlor, like a Simply Needed or Massage Envy.
Right.
These are clearly items that, well, we believe they're staying there overnight.
So, does that give you more of an indication that it might be sex trafficking-type situations where they're trying to control them and keep them in, inside the buildings?
Could be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. West, please continue.
So we also met with the Public Safety Ad Hoc Subcommittee, which consists of Councilmember Edwards and Ron, that discussed the proposed ordinance and recommended that the city council consider and approve the ordinance as presented by staff. Additionally, the Subcommittee recommended that the administrative citations be increased to $1,000 per violation. Staff has determined that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Equality Act, as there's no possibility that the proposed ordinance would have a significant impact on the environment pursuant to Sequel Guidelines, Section 15061B3. The recommendation before you tonight is to introduce and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 5.22, the Massage and Massage Establishment Ordinance of the Temecula Municipal Code. Also need to mention that there, it includes a recommendation tonight to change a section of the ordinance, it's on page nine of the ordinance, dealing with the denials of new applications for permits where the number of massage establishments equals or exceeds that cap. We're changing it from May to shall, and that should be on the dais for you there. And then lastly, to adopt the resolution establishing a schedule of administrative citation fines pursuant to the Temecula Municipal Code 2.12.060 for violations of Chapter 5.22. And that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Question time. Anybody? Sounds good. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak? Okay, since no requests to speak, we will close the hearing, and we'll go to comments. Anybody have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ron.
All right. Well, you know, I'm glad we're, we're finally here having this conversation. You know, thinking about last year where our focus was on public safety, you know, we rolled out new inspection programs in the community, you know, a more aggressive, I think, approach to making sure a lot of our businesses are safe and, you know, comply with our codes. We've increased police and fire protection, opening up new fire stations, hiring, you know, a significant number of new officers to sort of keep the kind of ratios that we think are important in our city. We've increased our support for the homeless outreach team, the cannabis task force, you know, Stu, you're with us, the, you know, day we, we're shutting down 12 illicit operations in the City of Temecula, and, you know, to be. And, you know, to be clear, those weren't just, you know, mom-and-pop storefronts selling cannabis, those were, you know, bad people with cartels running businesses in our city in broad daylight. And I think the next one is obviously, you know, one of the slides I think that was most telling to me when we started talking about this was the number of, you know, supposed massage parlors that we do have in the city compared to all of our regional cities. Now, I know we're a tourist destination, but that doesn't explain that. And let me tell you, you know, you drive through, you know, some of our parts of commercial districts, and, you know, there's a remarkable number of these businesses open at, you know, 11 o'clock at night with a neon sign out front. It's hard for me to believe that, you know, there's that many people in our town that are suffering from lower back pain. And it just became really obvious that we adopted, you know, a problem that sort of snuck into our city, and we had to do something about, you know, talking with our law enforcement folks, you know, it was clear that many of these establishments are not operating the way they should be legally, and we had to provide some teeth to that. And I appreciate all the time that the staff and our police department put into creating this ordinance because it gives them the opportunity to really crack down on this. And, you know, looking forward to seeing, you know, this play out. And, you know, looking forward to, you know, our city, I think we have an obligation to have a voice for those folks who can't have a voice, to stand up for themselves, especially in human trafficking, and then make sure that illicit activity like this is not conducted in our city. We pride ourselves on being a small town, and, you know, this is just one more step in making sure that we maintain that. So, you know, again, thank you all for all the hard work you're going to do, you know, enforcing these ordinances and making sure that every single operation in the city of Temecula is done legitimately. So I'm looking forward to seeing this happen. And one of the things, you know, at our last Subcommittee meeting, I'm hoping that, you know, in the future council meeting and, you know, Chief, I know that you provide us with, you know, a monthly report on this, but if you could include that as part of the report just to highlight some of the successes we're having, I would appreciate that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stewitt.
When we, I'm glad you brought up the marijuana task force because when we were closing down all those, that was one of the comments I was getting from the public, is what are you going to do about the massage parlors in town? So, ta-da, we're doing something about the massage parlors. And it was already in progress when we were closing all that down. Public didn't know that, but we were already on top of it. But I'm very excited. I mean, human trafficking is an epidemic, especially in Southern California with us being so close to the border of Mexico. And so it's, to me, this is a great thing for the city of Temecula to step forward and take the challenge on.
Thank you. Mr. Swank.
Just really quick, I won't expand too much, but thank you for the report and thank you for the time and effort that you put into that. I'm glad you brought that up. I do want to hear a little follow-up on how that's working because, I mean, I do think this is a major issue, and I know we got a little teeth behind it now with this ordinance and whatnot, so I'd really like to see, you know, what exactly is happening, maybe six months a year for now. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Swank. Originally regarding this, I had a little bit of a problem with putting a cap on any sort of business, but then I thought back in our memory was something that we did about, I think, eight, maybe nine years ago, we did it with liquor stores. And the argument back then, I think, still applies today. You know, if you go to some of the cities, many of the cities in Orange County or in Los Angeles and drive through them, sometimes you look around, you get the impression that that area was once new and vibrant and clean and bright, and you look around and you see graffiti and litter and zoning that didn't match and just the design guidelines that weren't adhered to, and it makes you wonder, well, who was in charge when all this happened? And you looked at somewhere, it just got out of control. Now, we're on the other side of that now. We're on the side of saying, well, you know, it hasn't happened yet, and before it gets really bad, we want to stay in control. So I'm okay with the cap, and just like we were with liquor stores. And a lot of people don't remember that, but we put the kibosh on liquor stores, saying, I think we have three in town, you know, and that's about all we're going to have. I think we've outlawed them. Something did come up fortuitously, and I'll mention it today, was I met with staff today, and Lisa, or Captain, I should say, you're going to be called to a meeting because the human trafficking thing has, it's gotten my attention, but I could see that it's gotten the attention of all of my colleagues here. It's not just an epidemic, it's a mechanism of pure evil operating, and if, there's been a focus on it a lot, there's been a focus on it a lot for the past couple of years, but, and there's a lot going on I presume we don't know about. But depending on what you say, Cap, when we get to a meeting and you brief us, okay, and you're going to hear from staff regarding that meeting, maybe we, as a body, need to draw the other cities together and start saying, perhaps we take a focus on it and do whatever we can, whatever that is, I don't know, resources or what have you, because again, it's pure evil, the purest of evil in operation, and just call it for what it is. Anyway, those are my comments. Unless there's anything else, these are ordinances, so the first thing we'll need is a motion for the city attorney to adopt the ordinance.
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. City Attorney, could you introduce the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula amending Chapter 5.22 Massage and Massage Establishments of the Temecula Municipal Code and making a finding of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Very good. Please cast your votes. And I have no doubt, let's have a look. Somebody, everybody vote, there we go, four, zero, with one absent. Need a motion to adopt resolution 19 next in line.
Move approval.
That was Councilmember Ron, second above Mayor Protem Stewart. Please cast your votes. And that passes for zero, with Ms. Edwards absent. All right, we're still on the public hearing calendar. Number 19 approved the disposition and development agreement for Vine Creek Apartments Affordable Housing Development between the City of Temecula as housing successor to the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency and Temecula Pacific Associates located approximately 130 feet north of the Main Street and Pool Hole Street intersection. On the east side of Pool Hole Street, the successor parcel numbers are 922-053-021, 922-053-048, 922-053-047, and this is at the request of yours truly and Councilmember Ron. Lynn, good evening to you.
Good evening.
Got a staff report for us?
I do. Good evening, Mayor Nagara, members of the council. I am here tonight to present the disposition and development agreement with Temecula Pacific Associates for the Vine Creek Affordable Housing Development. First, let me provide a brief overview of my presentation this evening. I will go over the affordable housing RFP process and then talk about the proposed project, benefits to the city, the disposition and development agreement, and its terms, which include affordability, density bonus, and the financial contribution of the city as the housing successor, and then finally, the development timeline. So we have been on this journey for a few years now, so I thought it would be best to start with a recap of the affordable housing RFP process. In 2015, the city, as housing successor to the former redevelopment agency, obtained clearance from the State Department of Finance to spend the remaining 2010 and 2011 affordable housing tax allocation bond proceeds. These bond proceeds, which were intended for the creation of affordable housing, had been frozen by the state for some time after their issuance because of the dissolution of redevelopment in 2012. As a result of getting clearance from the state to spend these funds, the Supportive Housing Services Ad-Hoc Subcommittee directed staff to create a request for proposals, or RFP, to solicit proposals from interested developers for the construction of affordable housing. Staff issued the RFP in 2016, and there was a lot of interest generated from the development community. Staff received 20 proposals from 13 developers on eight different sites. There's more. Staff presented all 20 proposals to the Supportive Housing Services Subcommittee in February 2017, and then the Subcommittee considered multiple facets of each project, including the number of units, cash assistance, city land donation request, service provider, and the overall program. At that time, the Subcommittee recommended that the staff present the entire city council with all of the proposals, which was completed in April 2017. After the development of a shortlist in January 2018, the Subcommittee and staff interviewed five development teams and selected two projects to move forward with, one of which is Vine Creek Apartments, the project we are discussing today. Since that time, staff has been working with Temecula Pacific Associates on the negotiation of the terms of the disposition and development agreement for the affordable housing project. Staff and the Subcommittee have been actively working with the developer to navigate a dynamic and changing financial markets and overcome several hurdles. In addition, the developer requested to enter into a land use entitlement processing agreement with the city, allowing them to move forward with the entitlement process prior to the adoption of the DDA. This agreement allowed the developer to simultaneously pursue critical financing for the project. The project was approved by planning commission on February 20th, 2019, and it has been a bit of a journey to get to this point, but we are enthusiastic to bring forward the DDA this evening for an exciting and beneficial project for the city. The proposed project, Vine Creek Apartments, is a three-story, two-building, 100% affordable, multifamily project totaling 60 units, with 15 units available for special needs occupants. The project is located on three parcels just north of the intersection of Main and Pujol Streets, on the east side of Pujol. Two of the parcels are currently owned by the city as housing successor to the redevelopment agency. The project has several amenities for their residents, including a community room with exercise equipment, pool and a pool house, open space with turf, barbecue area, a tot lot, and a greenbelt facing and engaging Marietta Creek. Also, an onsite service provider will provide, will deliver a variety of social services and educational opportunities to the residents of Vine Creek. The project will not only provide amenities to its residents, but it will provide benefits to the entire community. As you are all well aware, the state is experiencing a housing crisis. As such, communities are required to develop multi-pronged approaches to meet state mandates. The city has already adopted an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, affordable housing overlay, and density bonus ordinance, as well as frequently meet with developers that are considering affordable housing in the community. The city has been assigned a regional housing needs allocation, also known as RENA, from the Southern California Association of Governments. The RENA number determines a minimum projection of additional housing units needed to accommodate projected growth at all income levels. Vine Creek will assist the city in meeting these RENA goals in the extremely low, very low, and low-income categories. Vine Creek will set aside 15 units for families with children with special needs, targeting a population that is, that often has limited options in the housing market. The development of this affordable housing project is one more step towards meeting the housing goals, needs, and demands in Temecula. As I mentioned, the proposed project is located on three parcels, two of which are currently owned by the city as housing successor. To facilitate the development of the project, the developer and the city propose to enter into a disposition and development agreement, or DDA, to establish the terms and conditions of the project and the city's financial participation. Per the terms of the DDA, the affordability mix for Vine Creek Apartments will be as follows: 18 units at extremely low income, or that's 30% of the area median income; 12 units at very low income, or 50% AMI; 29 units at low income, at 60% AMI, and one manager's unit, which is unrestricted in rent. The term of affordability for all of these units is 55 years. Because all of the units within the project are affordable, the project qualifies for a density bonus concession according to the state government code. The developer did not request any increase in density, but he did request a reduction in parking. Per the state code, the maximum number of parking spaces the city can require is 113. The Temecula Municipal Code authorizes minor exceptions to the provisions of the Development Code for reduction in parking requirements that are less than 15%. On February 20th, 2019, the planning commission approved a minor exception to reduce the parking requirement by 9.7%. The project will provide 102 parking spaces. The proposed financing of Vine Creek Apartments will involve the following three components. The first is Temecula Pacific Associates with a $2.1 million permanent loan, the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee at $16.5 million, and then finally, our component, the City of Temecula's housing successor to the redevelopment agency at $2.7 million. The city's contribution, again, as housing successor, is broken down into three separate loans. The first loan is the deferred fee loan of approximately $700,000, and it consists of deferred development impact fees, or DIF, quimby fees, and permit fees for the project locked in at 2018-19 amounts. The permanent loan is limited to funds received by the city from a new source of funding, the Supplemental Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund repayments. These repayments were recently approved by the State Department of Finance as part of the payments for the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. If the city receives less than the $1.3 million figure on the screen, then the amount to the developer will be reduced to the actual repayment amount to the city. The third component, the purchase money loan of $710,000 reflects the purchase price of the property to be paid by the developer to the city, and this is reflective of a recent appraisal conducted for the property. The city will receive 50% of residual receipts towards the repayment of these three city loans. Payments will be made first to the deferred fee loan. And then finally, the DDA development and construction timeline. The developer will have until the end of 2020 to apply to and secure from financing from the State of California Tax Credit Allocation Committee. The close of escrow shall occur within seven months after the award of tax credit financing, but no later than March 1st, 2021. A previous version of the DDA that was mistakenly circulated referenced an incorrect deadline of July 2023. This is incorrect, and the correct version of the DDA has been placed at your seats on the dius this evening. Construction shall commence 30 days after the close of escrow, and then construction shall be completed within 14 months of its commencement. With that, staff recommends that the city council approve a disposition and development agreement with Temecula Pacific Associates for the development of Vine Creek Apartments. That concludes my presentation. Darren Berberian from the development team is here, as well as Paul Mara, the city's real estate consultant, if you have any questions from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good staff report. Question time. I don't think there are any. Madam City Clerk, this is a public hearing, so we're going to open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak? So at this time, we're going to close the public hearing and go to council comments. Since Councilmember Ron and I put this together...
Good job.
Thank you.
It's a much-needed project for the city of Temecula.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree. It's a great project.
Very good. Councilmember?
Yeah, no, I, you know what, I got, I was lucky to be involved in this from its earlier days when we put the RFP out several years ago, and it has, you said it's been a journey. It really has been a journey trying to get this thing done. And I think, you know, one of the things that's highlighted for me is just how challenging it is to build affordable housing in California today. And, you know, in, you know, while we're handed these mandates from Sacramento saying, you will meet these numbers of affordable housing, we're not given the tools to really do that. And even when we can provide free property and, you know, subsidize the cost of the housing and these loan programs and, you know, tax credits that are available and all that, it's still incredibly difficult to get this done. But I have to say, absent, you know, any real solutions from Sacramento yet, I know they're working on it, but absent that, you know, Temecula, we found a way, and, you know, found a developer that was willing to slug through a very challenging process with us. And, you know, we're moving in the right direction here, and we're going to provide, you know, affordable housing and equitable housing in the city as it's, as it's needed. So really happy to see this thing finally make its way through the process. Sorry it took so long, but I'm glad we're here.
Thank you, Dr. Ron. A couple of things. Darren, do you mind just coming up real quick, because I have a question for you that goes along with my comment? First of all, I, you know, if it wasn't for your pure tenaciousness, or tenacity, I should say, I don't know that we'd be here. And so now you have to go get that financing.
Yes.
And you also got till 2020 to do it, and so again, that's part of your tenacity. Your focusing, or part of your focus of this project for affordability is on the special needs community. Can you just speak just quickly on that? And pull that microphone. needs community. Can you just speak just quickly on that and pull that microphone next to you?
Sure. So, yeah, we've been working with our Nicholas Foundation from the start five years ago. So, Mark and his group are going to be working together with us to identify wait lists, generate families that can utilize these units, provide services on site. They will have an office in our community building, so they're going to have a huge presence there. And that, that's aside from the typical social services that will be provided by life steps for the project for all the tenants as well. So, we're actually going to have kind of like a two-team that kind of runs the show at our, at our project, which is actually pretty rare. You typically just have one service provider. So, we're, we're pulling all the stops on this project, for sure.
Sounds good. That's my only question.
Sure.
So, good project. Thanks for your work, and, and, and good job, council, for doing your homework on it. If there's no more comments, I'll entertain the motions.
Move approval. Second?
That was Councilmember Ron, Councilmember Swank. Please cast your votes. And that's four, zero, one absent. Go get them, Darren. Okay? Go make it happen. All right, congratulations. At this time, we're going to go to, we're almost done here. Let's move on over to commission reports. Mr. Sullivan of the Traffic Safety Commission, talk to us.
Briefly, we'll be meeting this Thursday, 6:00 PM, in these chambers to look at Red Hawk Parkway traffic. Call me.
Thank you. Mr. Watts from the Planning Commission.
No report to provide.
Thank you. All right, sounds good. Mr. Willis, Community Services Commission.
I don't really have much to say, but I mean, I can't miss an opportunity to talk into a microphone, right? No, we're working really hard, and staff's certainly working really hard. It is July, or almost July, and that is a really busy month for us. For the commissioners specifically, we will be working hard to design our golf carts so that we could look as good as you guys do in your Mercedes-Benzes.
Yeah. Sounds good. You know, July 4th is one heck of a party day for the city.
Really is. And, you know, staff does an amazing job. I mean, can you imagine what they do to make this all work?
They sure do, and so does your commission. Thank you. Moving on over to the public safety report. Captain McConnell, what do you have for us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff. We're definitely looking forward to the Fourth of July. It's always a good time. During the month of May, there were 6,667 file numbers that were generated. This number includes calls for service as well as traffic citations. Our deputies issued 1,667 traffic citations, plus 124 parking citations. The deputies also investigated 130 traffic collisions and 98 DUI investigations, which led to 46 DUI arrests. Our commercial enforcement deputy issued 27 citations, and our homeless outreach team had 94 calls for service for loitering and/or panhandling. They also did 13 outreach files, and I believe we had at least two individuals that were relocated with family members. So, it was a good month for us. And that's it.
Is that it?
That is it.
Thank you. That's a great report. Mr. City Manager, or Assistant City Manager?
Is on vacation, so I'm filling in.
That's right.
And we have nothing further to report tonight, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney General?
Thank you. I always liked the promotion. We had a closed session tonight, but we have no reportable actions from closed session.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, as much as we don't want to do it, we're done with our meeting, so we'll entertain a, unless you want to stay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move approval.
Okay. Somebody in there had a motion in the second. Madam City Clerk, pick it out. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.